Members, good afternoon. We have a quorum. The special finance committee meeting will start. There will be nine um occasions altogether twenty-one sessions of um meetings to scrutinize the estimate. The aim is to ensure that uh the funding asked for will not exceed um the funding allocated. Before each session, I'll ask the relevant bureau directors to make a speech before we hear questions from members. Altogether, there are three thousand five hundred questions in writing submitted by members. We'll give you more details later. The administration undertook that before the start of the um meetings, they will supply replies to the first three thousand three hundred written questions. Well, there are eight of us, and I will, depending on the number of questions to be raised, set down the time limit. Your questions will have to be relevant to the reply. Please quote the reply serial number. For example, for this session, CSP and then the reply number. When you ask your questions, if you want to ask supplementary questions, please do so in writing. And the scope is limited to the reply of the administration. You may use a specified form to submit the questions to the secretariat. You have already received the um form on the thirty-first of March. Before the third of May, uh we, the administration will give you the reply. And I would like to welcome Secretary for Civil Service, Mrs. Ingrid Young, Permanent Secretary for Civil Service, Mr. Clement Lern, Clement Lern, as well as the head of um the Civil Service College, Mr. Oscar Kwok. For attend, thank you for attending. Secretary, please.
Chairman, among the matters related to civil service in the twenty twenty-three twenty-four draft estimates of expenditure, I'd like to focus my introduction on three areas. First, civil service establishment. To strengthen physical discipline, we have maintained zero growth in the civil service establishment for two years in a row so as to ensure sustainability of public finances. In twenty-two-three twenty-four, we will continue to strictly control the growth of the civil service establishment and maintain a target of zero growth. It's expected that at the end of March twenty-twenty-four, the civil service establishment will remain at about one hundred ninety-seven thousand posts, including permanent and time-limited posts. Bureaus and departments will take forward our new policies and initiatives through reprioritization, internal redeployment, streaming of work processes, and enhancing of effectiveness and efficiency. The second area is civil service training. The chief executive put forward initiatives in the twenty-twenty-two policy address to enhance training. We have set aside resources for these initiatives. The estimated expenditure relating to training of civil servants is around two hundred and twenty million in twenty-three twenty-four. This year, the Civil Service College will resume a series of national studies, programs, and exchange activities to be held on the mainland. It will also further strengthen training in understanding a country's development strategies and national security, broadening global perspectives, and building a service culture. Since the establishment of the uh Civil Service College, the college for short, except for the creation of post of the head, the college has been operating on the organization structure and establishment inherited from the former CSTDI Civil Service Training and Development Institute. To promote the development of the college, there is a need to restructure the organization and strengthen manpower. We'll consult the panel on public service this month on the creation of a directorate post in this regard. The third area is about medical services and dental services for civil servants. In the coming financial year, we have reserved a provision of over two thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight million dollars for providing serving civil servants, pensioners, and other eligible persons with medical service dental services, including the pilot scheme on provision of dental scaling services to some eligible civil service eligible persons via private dental organizations and procurement and replacement of dental equipment such as dental chairs, as well as for payment and reimbursement of medical fees and hospital charges. Of the said provision, those related to families, clinic services, and dental services account for over one thousand and ninety-two million dollars. We've also reserved about one thousand six hundred and sixty-six million dollars for the payment of expenses on reimbursement of medical fees, which are not entirely predictable. The Civil Service Bureau will make use of existing resources and manpower to implement other policy measures. For example, we'll launch the Chief Executive's Award for Exemplary Performance to give recognition to exemplary teams or individuals on a regular basis with a view to encouraging them to constantly strive for excellence. The list of awardees of the first round will be announced in the second quarter of this year. We'll openly publicize the good stories of the awardees to showcase our excellent performance. The chief executive put forward in the twenty-twenty-two policy address the introduction of government-wide mobilization level to enhance the mobilization protocol and to conduct drills. We'll continue our work in this area. The resources required of uh for these initiatives are to be absorbed by existing provision and manpower. We'll be happy to take questions.
This is a popular session. So far, twenty-two members have pressed a button, but we only have one, we only have one hour because at ten past three, there is another session. I'll read out the names of the twenty-two members, and I ask members to keep their speaking time in questions for within three minutes. Mr. Chan Si-hung, Lo Wei-kok, Tikk Chiu-yun, Johnny Ng, Carmen Ken, Cha Man Kung, An Man Kock, Lam Chan Sing, Chow Su-chung, Lei Tong Kock, Stanley Ho, Shanghai Lung, Elizabeth Quat, Qua Wei Kang, Su Cheung Wing, Jeffrey Lam, Lam Chi Wing, Wong Kock, Yim Kong, and Tony Tsai. We'll start with Mr. Chan Si-hung, three minutes. Thank you. Is uh zero-zero-eight, that is the reply number. That is, the administration indicated that for the Civil Service College, there will be an increase of twenty-nine posts to establish a team that loves Hong Kong and is patriotic, and at the same time is highly efficient. And there is um estimate of thirty-one million dollars. I do agree that there is a need to strengthen strings. According to the opening remark of the secretary, there are twenty-nine new posts. Are they supernumerary or uh permanent posts? Because it's silent in this area, I would like to know more information about the twenty-nine posts. In the same question, the administration said that currently there are one hundred and eighty thousand or one hundred and ninety thousand civil servants. They will, for at least once, uh get a chance to receive training or to know more about the national development. You have not answered my question. There are only fifteen thousand people who have received the training in twenty-twenty-two. That means it will take at least ten years for to cover all civil servants. Are there any ways to strengthen the training in this area? Because what we don't want to see is that there is a, it will take ten years for every one of them to receive training on national development. Thank you. First, about the twenty-nine posts, they are all permanent posts, not supernumerary nor time-limited. The post holders uh and their duties, I will leave it um to the head of the Civil Service College. The second question, in the past three years, a lot of training sessions have been affected by the epidemic. Sometimes these trainings, these training sessions are done online to avoid um gathering. Now, the epidemic is behind us, we can organize training sessions more frequently. For certain groups, we will enhance training, say for example, uh new recruits. Starting from July last year, we have used a new way to train new recruits. These are mandatory induction courses. Every year that we have about ten thousand new recruits. So for new recruits alone, we can cover at least ten thousand. We started in July last year, so the figures doesn't reflect the whole year. I believe that it doesn't take long for us to cover all civil servants in our training. In relation to the twenty-nine posts, I'll defer to the head. But I have a supplementary question. Ten thousand new recruits will receive in mandatory training, but but there are serving civil servants that have not yet received training, and they will have to wait for ten years to receive one session. That's that falls below our expectation. Secretary. We will focus training on um middle and higher management. But of course, for the uh rank and file, there'll be training, but our focus is on the higher levels. There are many different levels, online ones, physical ones, and now we can travel to the mainland. So there will be training sessions taking place on the mainland. Perhaps in relation to the um to the head of the Civil Service College, we'll have to wait. We're talking about reply number fifty-eight. This is in relation to uh Works Department and the establishment of a professional grade, as well as wastage. It says in the reply that in the past two years, the establishment is more or less the same, but there is indeed a worrying situation of wastage. It, the figures is twenty-twenty-one to twenty-two because they don't have the updated figure. For twenty-twenty-one to twenty-two, the wastage rate is indeed worrying. For the WSD, there's a wastage of seven point one, Housing Department, six point nine percent. Over five percent wastage can be seen in the uh in the Drainage Services Department as well as the High Wastes Department. There are similar um worrying situations in other departments. So will it affect the implementation of public works projects? Well, the government's talking about um infrastructure first. Will that be affected? In the reply, we also find information about um civil servants leaving because they've completed the apprentices, but in the past, a lot of them would continue, say for example, for engineers upon finishing their apprenticeship. They will they will stay in the Assistant Professional Grade before they start their professional career. So will this uh policy continue? Um will there be cases when um some people cannot stay after they've finished their apprenticeship? Wastage can be explained by a number of factors, including retirement. So for the number of um resignation is actually not that high. To address this issue, we will fill the posts through recruitment. My understanding is that um for public works departments, there is little difficulty. These are professional posts are quite uh popular in the open market in relation to those who have completed their apprenticeship. My understanding is that there aren't many grades with a apprentice, with an apprenticeship system. Perhaps I will supplies the information in detail after the meeting. Mr. Lo, I'll be short. Just now, the secretary said that um recruit, open recruitment will be the approach to fill these posts. But we're talking about tight manpower in many different departments. And this is something that you cannot neglect because the situation is quite dire. I'm sure your views are heard. Mr. Tikk Chiu-yun. Just now, the secretary talked about zero growth in the civil service establishment. The budget mentioned this as well, and the budget also talks about enhancement of efficiency to face future challenges. I see some uh proposals for creation of supernumerary directorate posts. Would, does it give the impression that um they don't, they don't allow increase in the establishment, but there are increase in other posts? Information shows that there is at least ten percent increase of these posts. So how do you understand the concept of zero growth in the civil service? What about the number of posts created i- in a supernumerary um basis? How is it related to an increase in expenditure? Secretary. By zero growth, what we mean is that uh there are numerous time-limited posts within the civil service that will be deleted because they have expired. For some other uh posts, they're no longer needed. That's why they've been deleted. For zero growth, we talk about uh time-limited, we include time-limited posts, and the number will not exceed the number of posts deleted. So the overall number of posts will not increase. That's what we meant. Regarding directorate posts, there are some time-limited posts. There are some time-limited duties. We only create supernumerary posts, not permanent ones. These are necessary because they are related to uh public works projects and other areas. Even with these creations, the the overall percentage is under one percent of the total number of um civil servants. So the growth of directorate establishment is minimal. When these time-limited duties have uh expired, these posts will be deleted. Yes, well, there is no growth within the establishment, but what about outside the establishment? That means outside the establishment, there is no zero growth. This only applies to within the establishment. So how much more expenditure are we talking about for increase in outside the establishment? Well, we call them supernumerary posts, but when we count the number of posts, if you look at the heads, you will find the number of directorate and non-directorate posts, and those include a supernumerary posts. So they're all included.
Next, Mr. M K Cheong. I'm concerned about the wastage of civil servants, and I'm in particular concerned about the wastage percentage of um seven point nine four percent under IPD. There is a, an IP center and the fourteenth-five-year plan. What measures does the government have in terms of boosting the morale so that they will stay in the government? We are resuming normality. There are manpower crunches. There is a shortage of lifeguards in public beaches with the summer holidays around a corner. Apart from hiring short-term lifeguards, will you review the establishment of lifeguards so that lifeguards will continue to provide service in order that the public can still enjoy in the beach in summer holidays in IPD, which is itself a smaller department comprising two hundred to three hundred or so staff members? The number itself is not that great. So when there are staffers leaving the establishment, the percentage seems to be great. We will not let, let down our guard anyway. And intellectual property is a very professional area legally. One talent lost is indeed a talent lost. The IP Exchange Center is one of the eight centers, which is a new positioning of Hong Kong. So IPD colleagues are very much encouraged. This is one of the driving forces encouraging them to stay on lifeguards of the LCSD. We understand that lifeguards are very seasonal. In winter, there are not a lot of jobs available for lifeguards. There are swimming pool maintenance, et cetera. So if we turn them all into permanent posts, a lot of colleagues in winter will not have sufficient work, so we rely on seasonal lifeguards. In the past few years, there are increases in the number of seasonal lifeguards, the number of which can be supplied after the meeting. With new swimming pools being commissioned, we will also increase the number of lifeguards. Without follow-up, next, Ms. Carmen Ken.
Thank you, Chair. CSP zero-two-three and CSP zero-five-five. I'd like to follow up on my own question, CSP zero-two-three. There are Basic Law and National Security Law tests, and I am glad to see that it will be incorporated into the test starting the first of July twenty-twenty-two. Apart from foundation training, for those who do not meet the requirement, they will not be employed on a long-term basis. For professional grades and for bachelor grades, they will have to undertake advanced training before they can be considered for promotion. It's been nine months. Can we see the results? In relation to CSP zero-five-five, I'm particularly concerned about the three thousand seven hundred and thirty-four civil service, civil servants leaving the service in increase from eighteen, well, one thousand eight hundred and sixty-three last year. I'd like to know the distribution of their years of service within the civil service. I am concerned about what about the percentage of civil servants resigning after serving in the government for ten to fifteen years? What kind of measures do you have to retain these civil servants? Well, of course, I understand that there may be civil servants who retire, but what about those who resign? Secretary.
Thank you, Chairman, for advanced training and for new recruits. Have we seen results yet? It all started from July last year. It has been nine months. For those who have undertaken advanced training, the number is on the low side. They need to have uh served in the grade for three years before they can take the advanced training. We still need time to gauge the results for new recruits, however. We think that we have met our target by and large, and I will invite the head of the Civil Service College to supplement. Regarding the year of service for civil servants who leave the service, we have already provided the answer in another question. These tend to be civil servants that are less experienced. Some of them were still within the probationary terms. Well, this is understandable. They do need time to see whether these positions are suitable. Otherwise, they will choose to leave the civil service, but then we understand that we need to retain the talents. So since the establishment of the Civil Service College, the CSC, we have been strengthening our training. We hope that civil servants will think that there is much for them to learn so that we have been providing opportunities for them to add value to themselves. There is mounting pressure, but I also hope that these positions or these jobs within, within the civil service will bring them satisfaction. On the results of training, especially targeting new recruits for foundation and advanced training, we do not focus on quantity. Instead, we focus on quality or the mindset of our civil servants, and it is difficult for us to quantify these results. Let me give you some examples. After training, there is feedback. A member said we explored the Basic Law and National Security Law from the historical perspective, which strengthened our understanding as well as our loyalty to the HK SAR. This is from one of the members. The other member also expressed that this is a vivid way for them to learn about the history behind the nation, as well as helping them to develop a sense of belonging towards the country. Mr. Oscar, Mr. Oscar Kwok. Well, because of time, a lot of members are on the waiting list. Secretary.
Well, Chairman, Chairman, I mentioned in CSP oh-one-six, we did give information relating to the um age of civil servants who leave the service. I'd like to ask about CSP one-four-four-five and another question. In twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, and twenty-twenty-one to twenty-two, we can see that the number of people leaving the surface rose from one thousand eight hundred and sixty-three to three thousand seven hundred and thirty-four. A massive increase, and these are ordinary reasons for wastage. For the grade of administrative officers, AO, in the past three years, the number of applicants has seen a decline. The gist is that how we can attract quality talents to join the government? What kind of measures will the government implement? There are one hundred and ninety, ninety thousand odd permanent civil servants. These are public funds, but for the past two years, the government has been saying that these are not under the purview of the CSP. These are public funds. Which department or bureau should I turn to? I hope that the relevant information can be supplied to the legal. Secretary.
Thank you, Chairman, on the wastage figures of civil servants and the declining number of applicants for administrative officers, um executive officers. We have a JRE comprising five to six positions requiring a bachelor degree. In the past one to two years, we have seen a decrease in the number of applicants for the, for the JRE. This may be down to a general, general decrease in the number of students. Likewise, there are fewer DSE candidates every year. So, being the university graduates, this number of student has seen a decrease. We have been under the effect of the epidemic. There are special arrangements in relation to overseas examinations. Some overseas examinations couldn't be held. So this is not a very normal picture. In general, university graduates and young people have many choices. After graduating from university, they may choose to further their studies. There are also different avenues for them to seek employment. So we have been endeavoring to fare well in recruitment apart from taking out advertisements. We also have career expos. Not only do we send staff members to universities, we not only have stalls, we also have seminars and Q and A sessions. There are dedicated websites to attract passionate young people. They do not have to access the CSP website to look for the relevant sub-page. We hope that we can attract more young people to join the government. Next, Mr. Ah Man Yu.
I'd like to follow up on how we can retain talents. The secretary, secretary focused on improving the work environment, a better sense of job satisfaction, and young people would change jobs. I'd like to know how the remuneration packages of civil servants can be enhanced to attract civil servants to stay within the government. Will you consider other measures so that we can decrease or we can reduce the number of people leaving the civil service on fringe benefits? Dental and medical benefits. Our benefits provided by the government, there are also housing allowances which are cashable allowances. We have a pilot scheme on dental benefits. If it is successful, we may consider exploring how we can expand the scope. The Department of Health is providing these services, and we have to tread carefully. Be it cost control and quality control, we have to monitor the situation closely. And we are confident about the hospital
And we are confident about the hospital authority. If this is successful, we will explore whether there is any room for further uh benefits. We have five day week. I will not name them one by one. As a secretary, what fringe benefits or a remuneration policy do you have to retain talents?
Secretary, five day week is a family friendly policy. This is not part of the civil service benefit. For the younger generation, they may find it quite attractive. So without using additional public finances or manpower, we try to achieve that most of uh the civil servants have five day weeks, but for some, they rely on shift work or labor intensive work. So five day week is not implemented yet. But I've explained in previous panel meetings with the use of more technologies, we see a chance to reduce demand on manpower, thereby implementing five day weeks. Next, Miss Chen Chan Sing. Thank you. I would like to follow up on zero one five. Is in relation to disabled civil servants. In recent years, the uh ratio has been dropping. There is no K P I, but I hope that um the ratio will not continue to drop without the governments doing anything about it. In a lot of major enterprises or public bodies, they draw reference from the government's practice. It says in twenty sixteen, um there was um an internship for disabled students. Every year we see about a hundred students adjoining this scheme. Some of them may be suitable candidates to work as civil servants. Would you recruit more of these interns and um ask them to join the civil service? In relation to the P S R C post retirement service contract, over twenty thousand applications have been made, but only five thousand or so have been approved. Why such a low percentage? For example, the uh working family and student uh assistance scheme, there are dozens of uh contract posts. We now have a very tight civil um servants manpower and there is zero growth. P S R C may be a way out. How come there is a low um approval rate of these applications? In relation to um disabled civil servants, the figure we have supplied are those that departments have reported to us or that um we have um recorded these postholders as uh disabled as we can see that. But there are still some that have not been reported because they may, because some people may not want to declare um non-physical disability. So we believe that the number of disabled civil servants will actually be higher than the figure supplied. In relation to the internship scheme for students with disabilities, just like other internships uh programs, they are students who have to finish their studies, so we need to wait for them to complete their studies, and then they will compete with other candidates. In the recruitment of um candidates with disability, we have uh an approach to accord priority to disabled candidates. After they have um passed a certain recruitment tests, uh in the each of their categories, they will be given the priority for recruitment. If uh they score the same marks as other candidates. In relation to P S R C, they are for civil servants who have retired. They have to meet certain conditions. There must be a need uh to retain, to retain the um the civil servants so that they can pass on the knowledge to their successors or where there are succession problems. So it's not the case that we will approve all applications. So when the conditions have been met, the applications will be approved. Next, Mister Shao Si Chong. I would like to follow up on my own question. It's zero one four. It's in relation to civil service, uh civil servants' medical and dental services. First, in relation to these services, they are not privileged of civil servants. It's just a a term in the employment contract, just like public, just like other companies in the private sector. They will take out employees' insurance to meet, to provide the same service. How come the government, well, if the government does not take out employee, employees in medical insurance, then they should provide something like this. Well, you can only make a call to make an appointment on the first day of the month. If you fail to secure an appointment slot, then you have to wait for the next month. The secretary said that she would revamp this booking system. I'd like to ask about progress. In relation to the pilot scheme on provision of dental scaling services, what's the progress? I'd like to get an update. The next question is uh zero one six in relation to wastage is been covered by a number of other members. There are two figures. I see that there are a lot more resignations in recent ta, in recent years. And in relation to number of applicants for rank and file uh elementary posts, it's been dropping seriously. For some posts, um they may, they are unable to recruit the number of candidates to fill the vacancies. So what measures do you have to address these problems? Secretary, regarding appointment for dental services, we have been talking to uh staff unions. They would like to have a centralized queue. So we have been talking to the central committee and uh other staff associations to find a way forward. I think we will need the coming two to three months to talk to them before we can reach a conclusion about how to improve the system. In relation to the pilot scheme, we think that the, at the latest, in the third quarter of this year, we'll be able to launch it. So we're working at full steam to make preparations about um elementary level posts of civil, of uh civil service, service. I've read some press reports saying that for the private sector, regardless of the um the the duties, there is a drop in number of candidates for elementary posts. So it's not unique to the government. As you all know, that in relation to the annual pay adjustments for the lower income band, if the um pay trend indicator is lower than the uh middle band, then the indicator will be raised to the same as the middle income uh band. That is something that we have as a standing measure. Next, Mister Le Tong Kwok. I would like to follow up on C S B zero one six, the administration reply by giving us the number of um resignation and wastage. For the first of four years, it's about a thousand or so in terms of resignation. But for twenty one, twenty two, it's increased to three thousand seven hundred and thirty two, thirty four, more than a hundred percent increase. The administration said that in relation to the rotation and turnover of civil service, it's normal and stable. So I would like to know what the benchmark is in terms of rotation and turnover. Uh how much should the, how many, how much should the number of resignations increase to before they start to worry? And do they have, uh have they conducted any assessment to improve the recruitment approach? Say, for example, recruiting Hong Kong people living on the mainland, because there are a lot of Hong Kong students studying um in mainland universities. Will you consider recruiting them to come back to work as civil servants? Well, do they, um do their qualifications have to be vetted one by one before they are accredited? Are there any other um different ways to conduct recruitment, say, for example, iri um recruitment exercises conducted outside the regular routine or or other different ways? Secretary, apart from looking at past figures, we also look at the general situation in Hong Kong when we assess the resignation situation. For the other uh sectors, we see that uh last year, the not, the figure is higher than previous years in terms of a turnover. For a number of these sectors, they are competing to recruit. As a whole, the labor force in Hong Kong has shrunk. So that is a situation that is, that is experienced in many different trades and sectors. Well, we are, we encounter a normal situation in a not so normal um time. Of course, we will recruit to fill these posts. Just now, the member asked whether we will recruit uh Hong Kong residents who are graduates of mainland universities. We'll consider everything. As we said, that there is the J R E, uh covering um executive officers, trade officers, um transport officers, et cetera. We have examination venues it on the mainland. We're considering setting up another one in Shanghai because it cover because if we require candidates to go to, from different places to go to Beijing, it will not be very convenient. We'll also send staff members to publicize on the mainland. So uh we will continue our work. In terms of qualification accreditation, whether it has to be done on a case by case basis, it depends on the, the grade requirement. For some, they are not degree posts. Uh so there, they are, there is not, it is not necessary, but for you, but for degree posts, um we will have to find out the equivalent of the mainland qualification to see if it matches our requirements. Say, for example, a certain um honorary degree. Next, Mister Stephen Hall. I would like to follow up on questions asked by Miss Nick C Lam. They are zero three eight and zero four one. I'll ask on her behalf. One is in relation to improving the efficiency and effectiveness of managing substandard performers. The reply from the administration is that um, well, if there is no improvement uh with assistance and guidance, then they would um, they will take action. So I would like to say that whether there is any assessment, any public consultation. You said that by the end of, well, within twenty twenty three, you, you will consult the P S C, the Public Service Commission. If there is a detailed work plan, please let us know. And if you are not in a position to say anything, also let us know. Tell us that you have a work plan, but uh it's, you're not in a position to divulge information. We only have a term of four years, but if it takes you two years, then it will be difficult for us to do anything. In relation to zero four one, that is the uh government wide mobilization. Previously, there was a drill. We asked you for the expenditure and frequency. You did not give us a concrete answer. But we don't know whether there'll be uh allowances or subsidies involved in every drill or whether there will be miscellaneous expenditure. Would like to know more about it. In the previous drill, you said that it was quite effective. Well, of course, if everything is well and good, then it would be effective for you to mobilize the civil service to just say uh give out masks. But what about natural disaster or a territory-wide blackout? Well, to stimulate a situation, we'll increase your expenditure because you have to create a similar situation. So would there be additional expenditure? Would there be a cap on the expenditure?
Secretary, please be succinct. Thank you. For civil servants having inferior performance, we are already, already handling these cases. First of all, the department will reflect the performance in their appraisals. But when we think that there are problems, we will activate a mechanism under which we will compel the colleague to retire. If there is no improvement, the procedures are very complicated and fairness is an important factor which couldn't be overlooked. But then, without prejudice to the um fairness of the colleague, we would like to streamline the procedures. We will not initiate a public consultation as it is an internal matter of staff management. The P S C will oversee these cases and we will seek their comments. Next, on the government-wide mobilization drill, which was conducted in daytime, no colleague need to work overtime, so the expenditure has already been absorbed. If we have a real mobilization or if it takes place outside work hours, we have a set of rules to govern the pay. Only a very small portion of civil servants are entitled to overwork pay, well, to overtime pay. We will also have to see the number of civil servants eligible for overtime pay. Civil servants mobilized mainly have to deal with logistic support for emergency support or support at the scene. These will be handled by trained civil servants. So there will not be hardship allowances for this kind of colleagues. As it is quite complicated, you can give us a written reply after the meeting. Thank you. Next, Mister Shanghai Luo. Well, we are concerned about manpower and funding, but then fewer people are concerned about the skill sets of civil servants. As this is already an issue that the government has to face squarely regarding civil service training. Do you have any relevant courses on technologies? Do you have any plan to enhance the effectiveness and the interaction of these training? Mister Chan Si Hong is also concerned about the training of civil service, and it is not ideal for each civil servant to undergo the training only after fifteen years. Secretary, on training, I will defer to the head of the C S C. We not only train the civil servants, but with O G O, we are conducting departmental audit to see whether we can implement technologies at more levels, especially when it comes to applications. I believe with this road out, there will be more electronic services available to the public. Civil servants will also have to undergo training so that they can handle electronic work. On training, I will defer On training, I will defer to Mister Oscar Kwak. After the establishment of the C S C, this is indeed one of the priority areas under our purview. For the application of technologies, we have been holding training. We also have thematic seminars. In light of the latest technologies, we invited eminent scholars to hold seminars, probably for digital economy, smart city design. We hope that all our training projects will also incorporate this sense, that is, we emphasize innovation. And we streamline procedures with technologies. And this is our long-term goal. In the coming year, one of the main areas is within the C S C. To provide technology-based training, we will devise new systems. In the future, this will also enable a self-service training portal among civil servants. Secretary, well, I would like to have a written reply with detailed responses. Thank you. Next. Miss Elizabeth Kwak. I'd like to follow up on C S B zero three eight. We need to incentivize civil servants. We need to boost the morale. But I have all these years received feedback on A O grade. Some retirees have told us that there are indeed problems. So I think that it is necessary to revamp the A O system. Those high achievers should be considered for promotion. Well, right now, it is not that encouraging. When average colleagues also have promotion opportunities, there are complaints against certain A Os, and it is quite complicated for A Os to be redeployed to other departments. So we need to speak very highly of the relevant colleague in the appraisal so that the relevant A O can be replaced. So high achievers, well, it is actually very ridiculous for an A O to be redeployed if we need to speak very highly of the A O, but then he or she actually has a very poor performance. So, secretary, are you considering how we can revamp the A O grade? So that those with very good performance can be considered for promotion, can be given a pay rise? So what about those who do not have as outstanding performance? That is, those do not have the people-oriented mindset. Can you redeploy them? Can you penalize them? Can you even sack them? Secretary. Thank you, Chairman. While I do not agree that the A O grade management is as such for permanent secretaries, deputy secretaries at D four and D three A O's qualifications are very transparent. You can see, well, actually, you can refer to their experience online. If you count from the entry position of this grade, then you will be able to tell how many years of experience before they can pre before they can be promoted. As long as they have very stellar per very stellar performance, they do not need very many years of experience before they can promote it. The A O grade is a very small grade with some seven hundred A Os. Most of them are working the central government offices. Not only A O themselves, let's call members and colleagues working with them also know the colleague very well. So what you said will not happen, actually. This is a general grade, and they need to be rotated on a regular basis. We hope that the colleagues can be tested in other departments if their performance falls short of our experience in one single department. And roughly, we can achieve this. Chairman. Well, I hope the secretary does not brush aside my opinions. There are indeed these these instances. Miss Kwak, I believe that the secretary has noted your view. There are still a lot of members on the queue, and I have to let them ask. Next. C S B oh three two. Different trade unions said that they are not sure how much expenditure is given to the hospital authority for the procurement of medical supplies. Right now, we have the answer, one point three billion dollars last, six point three billion dollars last year. And now have with a figure, we can draw a comparison. Are these six point three billion dollars worth every single penny? Hong Kong permanent residents can also go to the hospital authority. These six point three billion dollars are expended on extra services. Does the department have follow-up? How can we make sure that it is well worth every single penny? On the pilot scheme on dental services, dental scaling, these will be subcontracted. And it is projected some working hours can be vacated to shorten the killing time of civil servants as we cannot well make light of a dental issue. After all, we have a lack of dentists. How can we more in a more targeted manner solve the problem? Next, C S B oh five five. Wastage of civil servants is close to our hearts. Zero growth actually leads to a vicious circle. There is more workload, but then there is no new manpower. Civil servants are having a hard time given the increased workload. When will the government relax the zero growth arrangements? Before that, we need to narrow the gap. In two thousand and eight, there there is a difference of one hundred and fifty three thousand in twenty twenty two. The distance became wider of twenty thousand odd. That is a discrepancy in the actual strength. The establishment was one hundred and ninety three thousand. First of all, six point three billion is not a funding per se. It is the calculation of the average unit price having regard to the number of civil servants using the service. So the number of civil servants using the service will have a bearing on this figure. Next. The quality is actually the same across the board. So there is no concern over inferior quality. Apart from these regular hospital authority services. There are three specialist clinics. There is one specialist clinic on Saturday for civil servants. The D O H also have family clinic services for civil service, well, for civil servants. There are also imaging services in terms of di- diagnostic services for civil service, for civil servants, and these are not within the calculation of the seven, six point three billion dollars. On dental services and zero growth, you will have to supply written reply. There are two more members, but because of time, we can only allow two more members to ask questions. The remaining four members do not have sufficient time to ask questions. Next, Mister So Chang Wang. I'd like to follow up on two replies from the administration, one for C S B oh six five. In the official reply, all new recruits within the three-year probationary terms have to complete training. And before they will be considered for long-term promotion, they will also have to undergo advanced training. For training comprising the constitution and national affairs, be be it fundamental training or advanced training, what is the number of hours? Are there any exams? Do they not give us the details in the replies? Without exams and sufficient replies, they will not be as effective. Next, C S B oh six nine. My previous question was how to address the problem of underrecruitment. There was no direct reply. You only mentioned internal redeployment of resources to ensure zero growth in in the establishment. But I think what matters is that we need to have sufficient manpower. In the policy address, there are a lot of very significant measures. And we are working very aggressively and proactively, but then without sufficient manpower, how can we implement all these measures? What type of measures do you have to solve this problem? We have recruitment difficulties. We are clear about this. But the government is different from private sector. If the government lacks manpower, how can the government operate? Chairman, well, I can take the first question, and the second will be deferred to the head of the C S C on manpower crunch. We have already expedited our recruitment for civil servants. We would like to compress our recruitment procedures in a fair manner. For grades that have a long-term shortage, we are considered recruiting all year round. Right now, some positions are open for application all year round, not just seasonal. So any interested parties can make applications. Overall, we want the civil service career can give our colleagues a sense of satisfaction. So we worked hard on training so that they will know that they have different opportunities to make improvements after they have joined the civil service.
Mister Kwak. I'll be concise. Just to give you an idea, a four-day training, three days will be devoted on basic law, national development, national security, and the constitution. So the focus is on these areas. This shows that we don't just go through the motion. We aim to foster um a qualitative change. Last person, Mister Jeffrey Lam. Last person to ask questions in this session. We see that in the past five years that the uh number of resignation has um reached three thousand seven hundred and thirty four. And the actual actual number of people leaving the service is much higher. Civil servants are concerned. But now that the government talks about resumption of normalcy, but there is no one to do the work, not enough people to do the work, say, for example, no bus drivers, no dishwashers, not enough construction workers, how can we achieve normalcy? The government's also been talking about actively attracting talents. But what is the result so far? Well, you've given us some figures in terms of talents, but this doesn't address the pro- problems we face. We have a serious wastage amongst civil servants, and you you can't recruit enough people to fill the post. Well, you have to think about uh safety and security. You see that there are bus drivers or drivers of vehicles that are too old. Someone uh had an accident and knocked someone dead. How can you allow these tragedies to exist? The chief executive talks about a result-oriented approach. Without sufficient manpower, you can't achieve the a result. You want to achieve the result without spending too much. But what I see now is that you have cost overrun to to achieve these policies. What grand plans do you have to make sure that these measures are done in good time and within budget? Um say, for example, publicity of Hong Kong outside. Where do you find the manpower and the expenditure? We will compress our recruitment process. If necessary, there will be recruitment exercise all year round, and we would also try to recruit um Hong Kong residents who are studying on the mainland. There is one point that I have not mentioned. We have a large number of people who have retired. So we have to recruit to fill these posts, and there are also people who have resigned. If we look at another five years or so, we you will see that there are civil servants who have chosen to retire at the age of sixty five, and they will be in their fifties. You will see a drop in number of retirees. And the need to fill vacancies left by retirement will be smaller, and the wastage rate will drop. We're also looking into the use of technology to reduce reliance on uh on manpower, say, for example, applications or public service. If they can be digitalized, then we can save on manpower. Then the spare manpower can be deployed to take up other duties. So additional work can be taken up by existing manpower without having to recruit. With these factors at play, I am optimistic in relation to um manpower within the civil service. Mister Lam. Can you make sure that you have sufficient manpower to streamline the procedure? You don't have to offer a better deal because you have inherent advantages. People will uh go to you with these inherent advantages. You don't need to answer us because we are going to start the next session in one minute, one second. I'm not going to take a break. We will see the next team coming in, and then we'll start the next session straight away. Thank you.